With our own Public Works Department to dramatically improve EMS response times. From bolstering law enforcement, implementing advanced technology countywide, to fostering safer neighborhoods on a localized level, Manatee County and the Board of County Commissioners are committed to a vision that is focused on your well-being.
As our county continues to grow and evolve, the heart of our urban core holds immense potential for progress and prosperity. That's why we're prioritizing and expediting requests for affordable housing development and taking action to identify opportunities for enhancing neighborhoods and business districts. As part of this initiative, we're collaborating with the Manatee County Sheriff's Department, the City of Bradenton, and the Police Athletic League to provide support for improving the area around LECOM. This expansion will not only bring extra-lit publicly accessible ball diamonds in parking, but also significantly boost the local economy and transform the neighborhood by directly benefiting underprivileged youth in the area.
The Manatee County Utilities Department does way more than manage the distribution of clean drinking water. Reliable utilities can attract businesses and industries to our area, contributing to economic growth and job creation. Not only is Manatee County continuing to expand services for our taxpayers with the addition of 75 new lift stations over the next five years, but we're also looking to improve it. We're in the process of constructing Florida's largest low-pressure membrane filtration facility at our Lake Manatee Water Treatment Plant, which will result in consistent water quality. And our spillway replacement project will ensure improved dam safety, enhanced flood management, and increased resilience for anything that Mother Nature throws our way.
Thank you for giving us the chance to provide you with a clear vision for our beautiful county. Please feel free to email any of the commissioners featured in this video by going to mymanatee.org/vision. From our award-winning beaches to the expansion of our convention center, it's with your support that we'll continue to make Manatee County the premier place to live, work, and play.
In Manatee County, it's absolutely gorgeous outside. I'd like to call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting, regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd. What we have this morning is that Commissioner Van Ostenbridge is not here, but he is on Zoom. Commissioner, are you there? Well, I guess we'll be joining this morning. What we do is that every, before every one of our meetings, we worship our God and we pledge to our great nation. Today, saying our pledge, our invocation will be Pastor Reverend, Reverend Sam Rayner from West Baptist, West Braden Baptist Church. During our pledge this morning is one of our very own, Norm Hagel, Master Sergeant, we call him Top in the Marine Corps, who served 20 years in the United States Marine Corps, hurrah. I'm gonna read a little bit about his service in the Marine Corps. Four Navy Marine Corps Combination Medals, three Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals, the Army Achievement Medal, the Presidential Unit Citation, two Navy Unit Citations, two Navy Meritorious Unit Citations, six Good Medal, Good Conduct Medals. That's something an officer can't have, only enlisted can. National Defense Service Medal, Kosovo Campaign Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal with a star, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Korean Defense Service Medal, eight Sea Service Deployment Ribbons, Navy and Service, Navy and Marine Corps Overseas Service Ribbon, Marine Corps Drill Instructor Ribbon. That's why Commissioner Bearden and I are so crazy from, because of guys like him. NATO Medal for Afghanistan, NATO Medal for Kosovo, eight Certificates of Combination, two Certificates of Appreciation, and three Meritorious Masks. As I said, that Top Hagel was, or Master Sergeant Hagel, was a Marine Corps Drill Instructor. He served in Kosovo, Iraq, and Afghanistan, and he also was in security operations in Guantanamo Bay and South Korea. Today, he is our Public Works Fleet Operations Chief and has been, and has been since 1919, has been awarded two Fleet Master, Sir, Master Awards for Association of Equipment Management Professionals, ranked in the top 50 leading fleet through the American Public Works Association, and recognized as 100 Best Fleets for the National Association of Fleet Managers. Sir, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us. We appreciate it. Now, if you can stand, we would stand for the pledge and for the invocation. Thank you. We'd like to do, right after the invocation, if we could, we'd like to do a moment of silence for our two warrior heroes that were Navy SEALs that were lost last week at sea. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the joy of living in this wonderful community. We thank you for the privilege of serving the people here, and we thank you for the responsibility that you have given us to care for those around us. Lord, I pray for wisdom for the Board of County Commissioners. I pray for a good day. Lord, I ask that you bless this time. It's in your Son's name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. If we could just have a moment of silence for our Navy SEALs. Thank you very much. Master Sergeant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service to our community and to our nation. Thank you very much. And Top, thank you for all the stuff you do at Public Works. Thank you, sir. County Administrator, are there any announcements or updates to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, all the updates have been added to the update memo.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any items that Commissioner Relektor would to remove from consent? All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ron, I just want to make sure you can hear me. I tried to speak earlier and I didn't get a reaction.
Yeah, I can hear you, sir.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we'll do at this point is that we also have a Port Authority meeting this morning, and I will adjourn this meeting and turn the meeting over to Commissioner Bearden, who is stepping in as Chair of the Port.
Welcome to the Manatee County Port Authority Meeting on January 23rd, 2024. At this time, I would like to open it up for public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? If you would, please come up to the podium, state your name, county of residence. You have three minutes.
I'll keep it brief, glenjably, and for the record. So I went out to the port about a couple months ago as an invitation. Renewable energy, you've got hundreds of thousands of square feet out there, and we're still not moving in that direction. They've got ports all over the country that have renewable energy. So I don't know what the big problem is. We did have your executive come to the Patriot Meeting and explain all the functions of the port, and they do a great job. So when I asked them about the renewable, they said, "We don't have the funds." I don't know about you guys, but when you're getting 20% back on your money or more, that's a pretty good investment. Had you listened to me 10 years ago, the system would have been paid for, generating tens of thousands of dollars, and it would have lasted another 20 years. So hopefully you can start moving in the right direction on renewable. You've got great rooftops out there, plenty of space, you're bringing in more refrigeration units, more containers, more power consumption, and that fallacy, oh, the FPLs have solar firms, those, that energy from the panels never make it 20 miles in to the port. Never happens. They can't take care of the 60,000 houses it generates now. So please reconsider that and move forward with a renewable component out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, Consent Agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to exactly reiterate what you're saying. We only have a very brief agenda. It's all on consent, followed by any Commissioner comments, and then I don't have any comments as far as the Board Director, Executive Director comments, so I would request consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have any items abiding Port Authority members that need to be pulled at this time? Seeing none, I'm entertaining motions on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Port Authority Member Commissioner Satcher, a second by Port Authority Member Amanda Ballard. We now go to a vote.
District three votes yes.
It's up, everybody's up. Yep. Okay. That vote passes, clerk, with a vote of seven zero. Moving on to the next item, which would be Commissioner comments. Do we have any comments at this time? None? I have this little flyer here from Seaport Manatee by the numbers, and this just shows us the amazing work that the port has been doing. 5.13 billion in annual economic impact, which is amazing, supporting 37,000 direct and indirect jobs, over $200 million generated in the state and local taxes, and this is not supported by no, it's no ad valorem, so no tax support. So keep doing the great job that you're doing, Carlos. It's a blessing to be a part of this port. And that's it for today. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
And we're back. Next coming up is one of the, a lot of, this is a fun thing to do, this is part of what we get to do, is the awards presentations and proclamations. So what we'd like to do now is a presentation of 2023 Employee of the Year, an adoption of the proclamation designating Paul Panic Day. And coming up, Charlie H. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, members of the board, County Administrator Bishop, County Attorney Clegg, and staff, who are still sitting in their seats, and I asked them to stand up and get me by.
Wow, who's running Natural Resources today?
Paul, please. The County Commissioners have adopted this resolution and this, and this, excuse me, adopted this proclamation for you today, and I wanted to read this to the record for all manner, and I expect to see this framed in your office in your continued employment tomorrow and the next day and the next day. So let me start by saying, proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida have expressed and acknowledged their appreciation for the dedicated efforts of county employees through the programs such as the Employee of the Month program. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to further acknowledge and recognize the outstanding and superior efforts and contributions of county employees through the designation of an Employee of the Year, selected from among those persons honored as Employees of the Month during that calendar year. And whereas Paul Panic has been employed by the county since January 1988, youngster, and is currently the Environmental Programs Manager with the Groundwater Section of the Natural Resources Department, and has been selected as Employee of the Year for 2023 due to the many and varied contributions he has made to Manatee County Government. Now therefore be proclaimed by this Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that January 23rd, 2024 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Paul Panic Day. In Manatee County, in acknowledgement of his selection as Employee of the Year and his dedication to providing the most responsive and efficient services to Manatee County Government specifically and to the citizens of our community in general. Adopted with this quorum present and voting this 23rd day of January 24, signed by Michael Ron, Chairperson of the Manatee County Board of County Commissioners. Paul, congratulations. You know, there are, there are many people who stand with Paul for this honor, and I'm sure Paul has something to say with you and your beautiful family who are able to attend here with you today. I also wanted to ask Alyssa Powers if she might come up and make a few recommendations and support for this honor and recognition. Alyssa?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator Bishop, and County Attorney Clegg. Sorry, let me move the mic. So it was my privilege to nominate Paul for Employee of the Month, and I am just so excited for him to, to be awarded this Employee of the Year. Having spent 15-plus years working beside him, he is truly an asset to the county, to the citizens, and to the environment, and this is your day. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Right. Give me here the mic.
Okay. Well, I'm back, and it's an honor to be here. And I know you've heard a lot about me, and, and the only thing else I want to emphasize is that I take great pleasure in helping other people succeed, and not just my staff, but management and a host of other people I interact with. And my, my career and job are very important, but my family are more important, and I'm pleased to say that they took time out of their busy schedule to be here today. So I'd like, I'd like you to meet each of them. First, my oldest daughter, Rose, the redhead over here, she's, she's 30 years old, she's gonna be married on Saturday.
Congratulations.
She works for a local freight brokerage, she's their marketing and communications manager, and she's been there over three years, and she's a great asset to that company. And my middle daughter, Gina, she's, she's 26, married, lives in New Hampshire, and she has a bachelor's and master's degree in environmental engineering from the University of Florida, summa cum laude, and she works for an environmental consulting firm and has been there over three years. And my youngest daughter, Abby, she's 20, she still lives at home, and she's getting a counseling degree from Florida Gulf Coast University, and she's starting her master's degree in the summer, and she's already diagnosed me with several ailments, including attention deficit, anger management, and a few others. And there you have three future Manatee County employees, right there. And most importantly, the love of my life, my wife, Kathy, she, we've been married, I need to get this right, 35 years, and she works for, she's a, she's a math professor, mathematic professor at State College of Florida, formerly Manatee Community College. She's been there over 30 years, and they don't have an employee recognition program there, but if they did, she would have been Employee of the Year three times or more because she's way more caring and conscientious than I am. And I'd also like to give special thanks to Alyssa Powers, who was just up here, our Division Manager. In the past two years, she has greatly changed the culture of our group, built and rebuilt relationships, expanded programs, and hired some bright upcoming professionals. It is a pleasure working for her. And Kelly Polansky, back here, she's our Division Assistant, and she's part of the employee recognition team. She and that group put a lot of time and effort reviewing all the wonderful employee nominations. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you, the County Commissioners, County Administrator, and all the other wonderful people that I interact with in the county. I appreciate all that you do, and that's all I had to say.
Paul, thank you very much for your service to Manatee County. I know that we've interacted a lot, and you're, I'll tell all the Commissioners, Paul is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to environmental and especially environmental groundwater and things like that that we deal with here in Manatee County. Thanks for having your wonderful family here today. I almost was gonna think you'd give your wife's age, but then I know you wouldn't be an employee much longer, because she would have taken you out. But thank you for all the hard work you do. We really appreciate everything you do, your, just everything you add to the team at Natural Resources, and thank you for just being here today and being part of us, being part of our family. We appreciate it. Thank you very much, and congratulations on both your award and the proclamation today. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything?
I will. Mr. Panic, thank you so much for everything you do for the county, and I think that the way that you spoke up here today, it seems to speak volumes about your personality and, and the kind of person that you are. You know, and instead of talking about your experiences and why you became Employee of the Year, you instead took the time to recognize the other people in your life who, who helped you along and to help, helped you to get there. So I think that that kind of self, what is it, whatever the opposite of self-aggrandizement is, that it, thank you, that, that really speaks volumes about the kind of person that you are, and we really appreciate having you at the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a motion on this item.
Yeah, there is, there's a motion up.
Yeah, there's no need for public comment on it.
Yes, sir. There is a motion by, made by Commissioner Cruz and seconded by Commissioner Turner. All those, I wish you'd all vote right now.
District three votes aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Chair.
And believe it or not, the motion carries seven to zero. No disdaining votes, so congratulations again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Paul, it's, it's our honor from Manatee County to you to present 2023 Employee of the Year. I'll read the plaque in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to Manatee County and its citizens by the Board of County Commissioners on this date, January 23rd, 2024. Once again, congratulations, and there you go.
Congratulations, now go back to work. Thank you all, thank you Natural Resources for all being here today and celebrating with Paul. Next up is we have another great event, it's our presentation of the January Employee of the Month. So Jolynn, if you come forward. All right. And, and so nobody was at Natural Resources, nobody's at Public Works, I mean, oh, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mr. County Administrator, and Mr. County Attorney. I'm Jim Rennerberg, I'm the Interim Utilities Director and the Chief Utilities Engineer. I am pleased to be before you this morning to introduce to you Jolynn Schmidtkin as the January Employee of the Month. Jolynn currently works in our wastewater group as our maintenance data coordinator. She's a dedicated and hard-working employee who consistently and quietly goes above and beyond to deliver exceptional results. Her commitment to her work is unwavering, and she consistently strives to exceed expectations. Not only does Jolynn excel in her day-to-day tasks, but she is also reliable and supportive team member, always willing to lend a helping hand to her colleagues. She has shown great determination in overcoming challenges and finding innovative solutions to problems, which has greatly contributed to the overall success of our team. One example is the, is the Lift Station Emergency Response Guide that she helped create. Jolynn's attention to detail and ability, and ability to think critically allowed her to anticipate potential challenges and develop a guide that would be beneficial and easy to use from staff in the EOC to the field. This recently created guide was used during Hurricane Adalia, which allowed staff to respond swiftly and effectively, minimizing potential damages and risks when a lift station is not functioning. Whether everyone knows this or not, you definitely want your lift station functioning properly, and Jolynn is the anchor to achieving this. I'll now invite Kevin Morris, our Deputy Director, followed by her immediate supervisor, Eric Gibson, for a few words.
Let me hand these to you now.
Thank you.
So thank
So, thanks, Jim. Kevin Morris with the wastewater division, and Jolynn is just one of so many dedicated, humble, hard-working public servants in our department, and it just means a lot to us that you've chosen to recognize her today. So we really appreciate that. And I wish Dr. Panik was still here. I wanted to share some numbers with you to kind of put things in perspective. So Manatee County has about 130,000 sewer accounts, and at each one of those homes, we had two and a half people, and the average person flushes six times a day. As we get older, we flush more. But that's 2 million flushes a day, 2 million times a day that your toilet flushes, and that water has to get from your home to the wastewater plant. A lot of things have to go right as it makes its journey. And so the lift stations are very, very important. We've got a very complex system, 750 lift stations, over 2,000 pumps, almost 10,000 level sensors and instruments out there in that system. And so there's a lot of problems that can occur, and you know, problems, though, don't become trouble if you handle them the right way. And so as Jim pointed out, Jolynn stands between problems becoming trouble. She helps us to understand, you know, exactly what kind of signals are coming in. And the crews that you see behind us here, every day, they're in dozens of these lift stations. They're airing them out so that they're safe to go down into. They're doing preventative maintenance. They're pulling the rags out of the pumps, things that people flush that they shouldn't flush. It's hard work, really hard work. And as a part of that process, they're triggering these alarms as they go through the system, and it's Jolynn's job, one of her jobs, one of her many jobs, is to discern which are the real alarms and which are the false alarms, because we don't want our trouble crews going out there and wasting valuable time addressing false alarms. So, so anyway, that's just one aspect of what Jolynn does, and I'm going to turn it over now to Eric Gibson, her direct supervisor, to talk a little bit more about her journey through the utility department and why she's so deserving.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking this day to recognize her. Ms. Jolynn's been here since May of 2018. She's started as a fiscal tech, moved through administrative first, I'm sorry, then to fiscal. She's now our maintenance data coordinator. She is a key player in the operations internal of what's going on in our office. Like Mr. Morris mentioned, we have several hundred alarms that come through every day. Some of them are initiated by the crews, some of them are actual alarms. She dispatches crews. She heads up our corrosion note control program on recording all the data that we review every month. She has definitely proven to be an asset to utilities and lift stations, and I'm happy to see her in this position today. Thank you all for taking this time.
Jolynn, we are very proud to award you the January Employee of the Month for Manatee County.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the honor of Employee of the Month, and thank you, you guys really surprised me on Friday. I was not expecting that. So thank you. It means a lot.
Jolynn, I can't thank you enough for the hard work you and the team does at Public Works. I mean, we do appreciate all the hard work you guys do, so our toilets flush every day. We did surprise you on Friday, and it was a tough day for you, but to let you know that still your county family cares, and our prayers are with you still. And congratulations on Employee of the Month. Now you're in the running for Employee of the Year. Isn't that cool? So.
I'm going to try to top that speech if I got it.
But thanks, guys. Thanks to the Public Works team. Thanks for everything you guys do. Citizens of Manatee County, thank you. We thank you for all that you do for us and all the hard work that you do here in Manatee County. So thank you, team. Thank you, guys, very much. And all right, now we go back to work. All right. Next was a presentation on water quality update, but I'm going to bring, I'm going to take some chair privilege and move that after presentations. So what we'll need is a motion to adopt all our presentations? Proclamation, sorry, proclamations?
Motion to approve.
All right. A motion for Commissioner Cruz, a second for Commissioner Bearden. All those in favor?
Aye.
KBO?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
District Breezy, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. And the motion carries seven to zero. First up is our adoption and presentation of a proclamation designing February, the month of February 2024, as Black History Month, and Commissioner Cruz is going to present that this morning.
They're scared to come with me. What's the problem?
All right. Whereas Black History Month dates back to 1926 and observes African-American achievements, and whereas Black History Month celebrates the achievements and contributions of African-Americans in the United States, and whereas Black History Month's intent is not only to increase the knowledge of Black history in Black communities, but also to spread the issue to American society as a whole. Whereas all members of the nation are affected by Black history because it is part of American history, which should be celebrated by everyone. Whereas Black History Month has become a symbolic time period in which the appreciation and celebration of African-Americans begins every year and continues all year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that February 2024 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Black History Month in Manatee County, Florida, and the Board further calls upon the people of Manatee County to recognize this special observance with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Adopted with a quorum present and voted this 23rd day of January 2024, signed by our chairperson, Mike Ron, and attested by the clerk of the court, Angel Colaniso. We've got some members of the NAACP here to have a moment to speak.
Boarding and congratulations.
I've got one more member. I got one more member. He didn't, he's not, he's shy. My wife's shy. Everybody's shy. When it comes to the NAACP, everybody's shy because we cause so much trouble in some things. But thank you. Thank you, and good morning. Hello, my name is Luther Wilkins. Yes, yes. Good morning, County Commissioners, esteemed members of the Manatee County Government and guests. I am honored to stand before you today as the president of the Manatee County NAACP branch to express my heartfelt gratitude for this proclamation celebrating Black history for the month of February. As an organization dedicated to the promotion, equality, and justice for all individuals, we are thrilled to see our local government recognize this importance of acknowledging the contributions of achievements of African-Americans throughout history. This proclamation serves as a vital reminder of the struggles and triumphs of the civil rights movement and the ongoing fight for racial equality in our society. We appreciate the commitment of the Manatee County Government, fostering a culture of inclusivity and respect for all individuals regardless of the race or ethnicity. By working together toward this common goal, we can create a brighter future where everyone has access to equality and resources. On behalf of the Manatee County NAACP branch and the citizens we serve, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to those who have worked tirelessly to make this proclamation possible. Your dedication to promoting awareness and understanding of Black History Month has not gone unnoticed, and we are grateful for the efforts in advancing the cause of social justice. So let us come together to commemorate this moment, this momentous occasion with dignity, humanity, and deep commitment to the values of equality and justice. Together, we can build a more peaceful union where everyone, every individual has, can live with dignity and reach their full potential. Next month, February 17th, the Manatee County NAACP has a Freedom Fund banquet where we are recognizing Black history and we are recognizing seven citizens that have worked tirelessly over 40, 50, and some of them, 40 and 50 years, serving our community. So I'm inviting you all to come out and enjoy this with us. Thank you. Thank you, County Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your words were spot on, and it's our privilege to be able to recognize this month as Black History Month. We appreciate all the hard work you do and the hard work you continue to do. With that, we have two commissioners on the board. Commissioner Ballard's up first.
Luther and Rita, thank you guys so much for being here today, and thank you for this important proclamation. I'm excited for the Freedom Fund banquet, and I'm going to try to attend. There was another event that I wanted to mention. There's an education luncheon on February 10th at SCF that is, that talks about our local Black history. So it's the education legacy of Lincoln Memorial High School. So I think that as we, you know, celebrate and commemorate Black History Month, learning about our local Black history is one of the most important things, so I'm excited to attend that luncheon as well, and I thank you guys so much for everything that you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate you being here and the work that you do. So to take a commissioner's privilege for just a moment, so yesterday evening, or last night, everything aligned, and all my little kids at least went to bed a little bit early. And so I got to watch a little bit of television. I watched a man named David Barton, and he was talking about the history of the American Revolution and just US history in general. And I learned two different things that I didn't know. Number one was that the first time the Continental Congress met, they spent two hours, it might have even been four, but I'm going to go with two, we'll go low, at least two hours in prayer, praying before they had their first meeting. And so, you know, this was a nation that was birthed in prayer. So I took that to heart. And the other story that he told and went through the facts and how it came about was the story of James Armistead. And James Armistead actually went, you know, pretended to be on the British side and was there with General Cornwallis and found out ahead of time that they were going to Yorktown, and so got word back to the, our armies that they were headed to Yorktown so we could get there first and so that they could keep the ships from landing. And it was just so interesting to learn that because, and James Armistead was a man with more melanin than me.
Right.
You know, and because I'm one of those people, I just believe, you know, we're all God's children, all from Adam and Eve, and my blood's red and everyone's blood's red, but how much melanin I have in my skin can be different. And he had extra melanin in his skin compared to me, and we won that battle and won that war and birthed the nation, and he played a significant part of it. And so when we mentioned, you know, Black History Month this morning, and I'd just seen that last night, I thought, just an interesting story to me and worth looking into. But thank you so much for being here and all the great work that y'all do.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate you. Up next is an adoption and presentation of a proclamation designating January 9th through February 3rd, 2024, as Gulf Coast Games for Life in Manatee County. And I think that Commissioner Turner and I are now of age where we can participate in those games, so we might have to.
We may be getting past it, especially when it comes to pickleball.
Pickleball is part of it, right?
Savage game. All right. Thank you, Chair. This is proclamation for Gulf Coast Games for Life. So whereas Gulf Coast Games for Life serves over 500 senior athletes, providing a vehicle for senior athletes to participate in an Olympic-style sporting competition each year, and I think pickleball's going to be included. Whereas the Manatee County Sports and Leisure Services Department is in partnership with Sarasota County Parks Recreation and National Resources Department and the City of Northport Parks and Recreation, promotes a celebration of sportsmanship, camaraderie, and friendly competition. And whereas the Manatee County Sports and Leisure Services Department in partnership with Sarasota County Parks Recreation and National Resources and the City of Northport Parks and Recreation promotes healthy aging through sport. And whereas the Gulf Coast Games for Life is celebrating its 35th anniversary this year in providing fun, fitness, and fellowship for a generation of champions. Now, therefore, it will be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that January 9th through February 3rd, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Gulf Coast Games for Life Month in Manatee County, Florida, to acknowledge and honor the senior population for its achievements and inspiration during this annual event. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of January 24th, signed by Mike Ron, chairperson, and attested by Angelina Colaniso, clerk of the Circuit Court. Thank you. Who likes, who's stepping up?
Hi. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Clegg, Mr. Bishop. My name is Allison Minardi, and I work with the Sports and Leisure Department. And I just want to give a little bit more insight into the games. It's not just athletic events. It's really an opportunity for this population to participate in activity, to feel connected to a community larger than they feel, and feel that they have a place to share their passion for recreation, which is the heart of what we do here at Sports and Leisure. Manatee County has been a part of this game, of the game, since its inception in 1989. And then we started to join and partner with Sarasota and Northport to expand the reach and offer more events all along the Gulf Coast. I do have some of the staff here with me today that helped organize and facilitate some of the things that happened right here in Manatee County. So here today, I do have Marcus Francis. He's our recreation manager, and he helped facilitate and organize all of the track-and-field events that happened at St. Stephen's just last weekend. It was very cold, but still a success. We also have Paige Edens here. She helped us coordinate the bowling component, and it will happen next week at Bullmar Lanes. Not present, but also worth noting, Dave Shermer helped coordinate the golf that happened at Tara Golf just last week as well. And then we also had Michelle Richardson and Jay Jordan. They helped orchestrate and facilitate the very popular pickleball events that happened right here at GTBRA Walton Center. Just as a side note to give you the scope of that, of all the registrations that happened across the entire Gulf Coast, roughly half of them were to participate in the pickleball events that we had. So it was really wildly popular. We are really thrilled to be able to host it right here in Manatee County. We also pulled just a couple of statistics and demographics just to share, just to show you the scope and the range. So we pulled the oldest participants from male and female. The oldest male participant this year was 91 at the time, and he participated in golf just last week. Oldest female, 97. 97, and she will be participating in three different events at the Sarasota Aquatic Center for swimming. Also, we had a mega athlete here in Bradenton who registered for 10 different events. That's one of the most that we saw registrations for. And we also had a father-son team golf, do-the-golf event last week. Son was 50, father 78. So you can see how this event just brings family together, brings community together, and we are just so honored for the commission to recognize the importance of these games and highlight the athletes that participate in them. So thank you very much. 50. Dangerously close.
Well, thank you, guys. Sports and Leisure, thank you, guys, so much for continuing these events. It's so important, and thank you for bringing Sarasota and Northport into it. I look forward to next year when I might participate in the golfing event, but it'll be, thank you, guys, for the work, hard work you guys do and continue to do. So thank you very much, and congratulations on the proclamation.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next year.
Absolutely. You're 36.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our presentation that was scheduled. It's the Water Quality Update. And who is leading? water quality update. And who is leading that? Good morning again, Charlie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, County Administrator Bishop, County Attorney Clegg. Thank you for this moment of time on your busy agenda. For us, us, the Natural Resources Department, and our cooperating Departments of Utilities and Natural Res and and Public Works, and all the other employees of Manatee County that work every day towards water quality improvements in Manatee County. We have a PowerPoint here that I'd like to run through a little briefly, but we're gonna cover three topics here: expanding our existing successes that we have in Manatee County, supporting our partner organizations such as Keep Manatee Beautiful. And we're gonna be planning for the future here, and a little discussion about that in a minute. First of all, though, next slide, I hope, is that button. Aaron, it's not. Next slide. Next slide. There we go. Fine. The next slide is a little presentation of those key and senior managers, not the entire department of 14 staff, but the senior managers that work every day towards this specific task of ensuring water quality is water is monitored, even our air programs as well. I don't want to lessen that, for instance, but our water issues are very important in Manatee County from the source of drinking water to supporting our wonderful wildlife that is here. And these individuals work very hard to ensure not only are we watching these our improvements to take place, but we are meeting our regulatory requirements with the federal government and the state of Florida. We have a water quality track record that's that's right on right with it compared to other counties around here. I'm very proud to be part of that program. We have wastewater facility improvements, water quality monitoring, fertilizer ordinance I want to explain, and certificates and education programs through our wonderful extension program that I'll highlight here in just a few minutes. But first of all, in addition to that, stormwater quality improvements, watershed protection overlay districts that were passed in the 80s and 90s to protect the drinking water quality of Lake Manatee and Everest Reservoir. And of course, our Environmental Lands Program, which has just taken off this this last year after citizens voted to support that referendum to acquire those properties. Take a moment here. This slide is an effort to just identify what it takes to measure water quality in Manatee County. This is almost 80 stations where sampling is done on a monthly or bimonthly basis, despite the weather. It's like the postal service, come hot rain or snow, sleet or say, or or hail, we're here out there in the water. And that that results in over 11,000 different samples being taken and looked at. So you can be assured, and the residents can be assured, that Manatee County is working hard to make this happen and to always observe where we are in our water quality picture. It's these statistics that are provided to our Tampa Bay Estuary Program partners, allowing them to effectively and widely promote the advances of water quality throughout Manatee County. They take that data from Manatee County and its staff. I want to spend a little bit more time on this slide in that, in addition to that water quality monitoring program, we do, in fact, work on all areas of activity. Our extension program, for instance, works each day with some of our residents and commercial operators to ensure that we're using water efficiently and that water doesn't run off through a lawn and and deliver whatever contaminants that might be there to the curb and gutter, to the stormwater system, and eventually to Manatee County. They save over 18 million, they have saved over 18 million gallons of water last year alone in water irrigation efficiencies. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the seagrasses that have been that are responsible and responding to our water quality efforts. 1,400, 1,400 acres of seagrass, 114,000 acres of seagrass, is larger than the sea limits of Bradenton that lie just offshore in Sarasota Bay and in the Gulf of Mexico that depend upon the water quality that we provide. We have storm event sampling for bacteria. Last year and the years before, we were faced with possible closures of our recreational beaches along the Gulf because of bacteriological readings that were taken around Palmasola Bay and assumptions made by the Health Department that 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 contamination extended throughout the entire county. We were able to respond and and keep our beaches open to prove and demonstrate with our own sampling efforts that bacteria that is related to fecal coliforms, animal waste products, and other things were not affecting the Gulf beaches of Anna Maria Island. There are many stormwater projects that we're gonna be pursuing also that take a huge investment and plan, plan ahead for for activities in some of our important basins like Pierce Canal and Bull East Creek and Mill Creek up there by the by Lake Manatee. And also, this department, this division, is on the ready 24/7 for emergency response sampling in case of oil spills, overturned gas trucks. Pawnee Point is a good example where staff from this division and this department were there, along with the county administrator, I remember, out there doing the sampling, doing the observations, and being very careful to to actually document where the damages were occurring and steps needed to reverse that and clean that up. One of the things that we have gotten implemented as a community is a recognition that fertilizer, when applied inappropriately to a lawn, or especially during the summer season, where almost daily rains are working through our lawns and our grasses to deliver whatever we place on it back out to the storm gutters, back out to our streams, and back out to the reservoir. This is a very proactive program that we've implemented since 2011. And we find that the the program is helping us to support our regulatory requirements as well. We have to demonstrate to the federal government that we are monitoring and observing and correcting water quality problems. And that's accomplished only through a close and careful daily observation. The federal water quality permits that we hold and the Tampa Bay Management Consortium process are proactive programs to keep Manatee County in compliance. The total maximum daily load requirements and basin management plans are regulatory requirements that come after a violation has been determined. It's our effort to keep us above that line. TMDLs, as the abbreviation holds, and basin management plans, those are below the line. You haven't made your you haven't made your your goal when you're in those programs. We want to keep Manatee County above the line at all times. The fertilizer ordinance, as you know, has been implemented, restricts those applications through June through September. It is not a fertilizer ban. There are still operations in agriculture, golf courses, our athletic fields at GT Bray and on all around the county, vegetable gardens. You can continue to use your fertilizers there. But we're focusing mostly on residential lawns and the commercial applicators that that use them. And we do that with, again, with daily monitoring. But we have found that, again, with these restrictions, the public has generally has been a good response. We had very few enforcements, very few comments of of not doing the right thing. And in fact, the industry has responded too. Knowing that summer fertilizer restrictions are in place along southwest Florida and many other locations, the industry has responded by developing a summer blend. I don't know if you, I'm from Wisconsin, and Lion and Klugel beer is up there, and you got the summer shanty blend. I don't know if you've ever had it from down here, but you talk about a summer blend and fertilizer, they're doing the same thing to allow us to still, you know, keep our lawns healthy and green, but not load it up with the nitrogen that's so harmful. And finally, the fertilizer ordinance, as I mentioned, is possible with the cooperation of our partners, like the Estuary Programs, Keep Manatee Beautiful, and for certainly our individuals, because it starts at the home. And the Be Florida Friendly Campaign is a campaign that came through the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and the Tampa Bay Estuary Program. The IFIS Program for our local extension is there with continuous education. We have, we have a flyers that we put out each 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 year in in the bills that we place to let people know why and and how. It says it's the law, but it's also an education program and a very high degree of cooperation there. It really takes a village to make this happen, and we're seeing it happen in Manatee County. This next slide is kind of like, well, you say this happening, but where's your data? What's your facts? And again, this this is a trend. A number of samples have been taken from, I believe it's from 20, I'm gonna say 2007 through 2011, when we implemented the ordinance, and the years that followed. You can see gold to blue. Blue is when the ordinance is in effect. Gold was when the ordinance was not in effect. Now, there's a decline. There's a trend. There's a reduction or a holding steady despite, think about the growth that's happened in Manatee County since 2011. And we're holding that line and keeping nitrogen down. Now, there are many of, there are many causes to nitrogen releases. There may be a fleet of ducks right by your sampling point, and it spikes way up. But on average, across the county, this is evidence, I believe, that continued diligence with our fertilizer program is producing results. And here's a little bit bigger picture also, in trying to describe, you know, getting beyond the numbers and getting beyond the science. We've tried to provide a a bigger picture that lets people say, are we good or are we not good? The blue arrows indicate there that our nitrogen levels are going down. And the red arrows indicate they're going up. We're not perfect in some locations. The size of the arrow is the magnitude of the change. And what I want to point out there is that in those blue arrow areas, those are existing developments that have been there before stormwater regulations really came to bear with our Water Management District. And you would think, well, that's where the most pollution is occurring. But why are the nitrogen levels going down in those pre-existing residential areas? I've got to say, one of them is reasons of fertilizer ordinance. So here we are with results and outcomes. Again, this may be possible with many of our partners. I was gonna have Jennifer Hoffman here with me, but apparently she's unable to make the meeting today. So I'm gonna take a little bit more time on this particular slide to talk about our partnerships. Keep Manatee Beautiful, and there are other organizations as well. There's Explorer Scouts, the people who dive on our our artificial reefs and and clear them of debris, and the efforts of others. But Keep Manatee Beautiful has been a a cornerstone of public participation and volunteerism in Manatee County for decades. And in so, in the last year alone, some of these statistics relate to their most recent successes. The volunteers are 3,750 out there working our roadways. That's 17,000 hours, almost more than a half a million dollars of equivalent value of labor that would otherwise be provided by Manatee County to keep our rights away clean. It's a huge, a huge input. Look at the trees and giveaway. The, you know, trees bring oxygen. The thousands of trees have been donated to Manatee County residents to the Keep Manatee Beautiful Program, particularly close to my heart, 1,000 sea oats planted along our coastlines to help build our our dunes and secure the the territory that is there. Cleanups, gardens during Earth Day. Look at the partnerships there. Bradenton Area Visitor Adventures Bureau, Sarasota Bay Watch, Sun Coast Aqua Ventures, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Palmetto High School, St. Stevens High School. They, this is just a short list. It goes on and on and on. And look at the trash. Again, numbers mean and make a difference. 11,000 tons. That's probably close to, you know, a week of of trash that comes to Manatee County and landfills every day, or more. Recycling programs, keeping it out of the landfill, and also the perennial tire collection. That don't, they don't go away. They're here. Keep Manatee Beautiful is there for us as a partner and a supporter to keep our environment and our water quality clean. So let's look a little bit about where we've been to where we're planning to be. I want to be able to say that we're gonna cover a little bit of wastewater improvements, stormwater improvements, natural systems. And finally, as Reagan said, trust but verify, testing inspections inspections and verifications. Wastewater improvements, I think Jim is here back there to support me, Chief Engineer with the utility system. I provide these statistics. And since 20, excuse me, since 2017, improvements were made at the Southwest Plant for treatment efficiencies, but they resulted, they resulted in nearly a 50% reduction in the level of nitrogen concentrations in the wastewater and in the reclaimed water product delivered to our residents. Like storm, like irrigation water, sometimes reclaimed water is used prolifically, and there's runoff. And that reclaimed water also makes it to the curb, to the streams, and to Sarasota Bay. And reducing nitrogen in our reclaimed water product is a way, a big way to tackle the minimization of nitrogen to our environment. Improvements at the Southwest Plant did exactly that. And I might add, that was not done under a regulatory requirement or so-called consent decree by the Department of Environmental Protection. That was a program that this board put in place, funded and implemented because it was the right thing to do. And involved, you know, a reduction of ammonia and other products in our wastewater. And it happened, and it worked. Now, let's take a look at what's planned from '24 to '28. Inflow and infiltration into our pipes, that's a direct route for raw sewage to enter into the environment. Sealing those pipes, those older and aged pipes, is very, very important. $125 million have been set aside for that effort. And also, let's not stop there at the Southwest Plant. Let's continue to make those efficiency improvements. And in your CIP, there's over, excuse me, $496 million committed between '24 and '28. Commissioners, this is $600 million in investments you are making for water quality improvements in Manatee County in utilities alone. Don't let anyone ever say that Manatee County is asleep at the switch, not planning for the future, or not working hard with huge investments to make our water quality true. Can't believe I just did that. So what does that, what does that mean? There we go. Thank you. Stormwater improvements. Let me emphasize there also that when we're working out in the in the in the field with Public Works Department, controlling and lowering the level of flooding, what I call the misery index, the frequency and severity of flooding, we have the opportunity also to co-locate water quality improvements with that work. And we have found this works every time. We're working through master plans that you have funded, along with the Water Management District's participation for Mill Creek, Gap Creek, Pier Strain, and the Bull East Creek. Again, in those urbanizing areas of watersheds where former, you know, stormwater holdbacks are not in place, a lot of retention ponds are not put in place because all those subdivisions were built prior to those regulations. And we're trying, we're now going back retroactively and fixing that with our flood protection programs. And we install automated structures at the at the drains to skim off the floatable pollutants, and also let the water still and let the natural plants take that up. That's what we're doing in many of these locations. And finally, the low-hanging fruit. You know, you keep your house clean by street, by vacuuming your carpets and sweeping your tile floors. Here, street sweeping is a is a banner of our operation. And this year, we're deciding to double the frequency of that storm, of that street sweeping. That is gonna make a huge difference before, as a proactive step, to keep the pollutants out of the water in the first place. Let me talk a little bit about natural systems that combine with that. Conservation land acquisitions, as you are now supporting, are an effort to not only, you know, protect and promote habitat and restoring balance, but in a way, they're preemptive as well. Many of the local, many of the properties we are acquiring would would have otherwise supported additional housing. Now, we need housing in Manatee County. But sometimes, when it's there on the waterfront or there on a sensitive environment, sometimes an acquisition program to to protect the habitat also preamps the construction of homes that would introduce more pollutants in that location. This is a strategy that's used by all the governments in Florida, especially those in southwest Florida, again, to minimize nitrogen. And it's recognized by the Tampa Bay Nitrogen Consortium as an effective tool to keep the pollutants out of the water. Habitat restoration is very important as well, because it allows Mother Nature to slow down that rainwater, let it soak into the land, and provide the treatment. I won't say anymore about habitat. There was, there was a video just this week shown out at Duett, the habitat to support our apex predator, the panther. Commissioner Van Osterbridge and Ranger Jerry, Jerry Miller were there to talk about the value of natural systems and habitats to protect not only our living resources, but our plants and all the plants that help protect water quality. Manatee River oyster restoration. I'm gonna ask, I didn't bring it. I'm gonna, there we go. There we go. You know, vertical oyster gardens. You ever wonder what that is? Well, this is it. Suspended by stainless steel wire that will not degrade in the environment, and this provides habitat for living oysters to attach to it. If you've ever been around the water, around red mangroves, every one of those dropped down prop roots are filled with oysters. I think we got the inspiration from that. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a minute. But this is the kind of thing, oyster is just like this. But this is the kind of thing, oysters just like this in the Manatee River are working 24/7. They don't take weekends off. And they're there to remove the nitrogen producing and the chlorophylls and all the algae that, that covers our water sometimes in the summertime. Living oysters in the Manatee River and the Bradenton River where we see them growing are being, more of them are being reintroduced to do more and more. More is definitely better in that circumstance. Seawall conversions to living shorelines. Our example, our, our showcase will be at the Palmisola Yod Basin in Bradenton, in Manatee County on Palmisola Bay, where a failing seawall there will be replaced with a sloped shoreline of vegetation that allows the water as, to rise up against that shoreline and not erode soil into the, into the, back into the bay and give plants a chance, again, to touch the water and remove the pollutants with their root systems, et cetera. Finally, steam, stream restoration in GT Bray is one example of the many locations we could do with our channelized streams. They're built to move floodwater and they still will. But when we introduce a few curves and angles to that stream, like on a, on a major scale that's happening in the Cassemi River throughout central Florida, we have the opportunity in a microcosm to do that here in Manatee County. Because there's water that flows through those streams every single day. It's called base flow, comes from the groundwater. It also moves and moves out to the bay. And if we can instill that and slow that water down, the everyday flow, not the floodwater, but the everyday flow, we will achieve more and more water quality improvement. Restoration projects benefiting the bay, here again are the numbers. The famous preserves that we have, Emerson Point Robinson, Duette, GT Bray Park, Bennett Park, Hidden Harbor, and more that we'll be doing today, tomorrow, and next year and years into the future. Again, what is Manatee County doing to protect its water quality? It's right here on that slide. 5,000 seagrass plots, 25,000 trees planted just this year alone throughout Manatee County by Parks, Parks Maintenance Group and our Natural Resources Department, 15,000 acres of habitat restored. 1,500 of these dropped in residential canals, off people's docks, all working for water quality effort. Back to the people who work for you and all of us in the water quality area. What do we want to do to maintain and continue to provide an aggressive water quality program for Manatee County? I mentioned we've got 80 stations. Well, just by doubling it, going to 82 stations by adding two automated samplers, we start improving the frequency of our sampling. We moved from 11,000 samples to 13,000 samples. Again, monitoring, watching, detecting and preventing upticks and increases by watching and monitoring. Five golf course maintenance inspection cycles at 40 golf courses in Manatee County. Want to pick that up. We want to get there every three years, not every five years. And I'm not going to, I'm a golfer myself, a lifelong golfer. Golf courses are pledged to protect their environment, keep their sod healthy, get a good game going, and, and work with the environment, not against it. But inspections and verification are always necessary. Meaning our growth needs, you can see there, we have some illicit discharges, emergency responses. We want to maintain that 24, 48 hour response because what are we, growing at 10,000 or more people every year? So we've got a system and we're adding to it. And of course, as you know, your staff sometimes needs to be able to move with it. We want to expand our air and water quality monitoring programs, bacteriological testing capabilities at the lab, automated sampling requirements. Now, there's three FTDs there proposed. It's something that our department will, will present to the county administrator and to the senior leadership team, and we'll work through the budget process of priorities. Everyone's asking for more staff. We recognize that. We'll find our way and we'll do the job we need to do with this support or, or other means. But I want to thank you. This, this results and closes our presentation with, I hope I've left a matter of assurance with you that the people behind me in our water quality and environmental protection division are working hard every day and with our utility partners and with our public works partners to protect water quality in Manatee County in which I am proud to serve. So thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. That was a great presentation. Question, is this, is this information available on our website under natural resources or?
Well, after today, it will be.
All right. Thank you. So the public can go in there and pull it up and, and see anything you presented today. Your guys' work is unbelievably important to the life of Manatee County. Natural resources, public works, utilities, everybody does such a great job in ensuring that we have clean water here in Manatee County. And I know that how hard everybody is working, believe me, we really do. And thank you for all the hard work the staff does, the teams do out there every day that are making sure that our water quality is the best that it can be here in Manatee County for our citizens and future citizens. So thank you very much. I do have Commissioner Turner on the board.
Well, you stole a lot of my thunder. Charlie and team, thank you very much. This, this is really important, what you do, and it's a major concern of our residents, as we know. So putting together this presentation and informing everybody is, is really important. It will help things. So just like to thank you for all you do on the daily and thank you for this presentation.
Mr. Chair, there's room on the board?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Charlie, I echo a lot of what the chair and what Commissioner Turner said, and I just hope that the, the board hears that the investments that the county is making into the Natural Resources Department, it's, it's bearing fruit essentially. I think that's important to know because, you know, through LMAC, we're expanding natural resources by making significant purchases within the county of greens, additional green space. And whether it's in East County over in Commissioner Satcher's district, or if it's coastal wetlands in my district, you're seeing great successes from your team in managing both of those, including water quality as well. And I think that's important because I hope the board will continue to invest in that, in the county's natural resources. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. County Minister?
Yeah, I'll echo those thoughts. Charlie, a great presentation. Thank you.
It's done with your senior team. Also, Deputy Minister, as yourself, thank you for, so much for your support.
Yeah. Well, I just want to highlight some other additions. Your budget of water quality is over $1.5 million that we dedicate so you can do these type things. The board's approved more money for Keep Manatee Beautiful to do their outstanding work that they're doing. We've invested, as you mentioned, to the street sweeping. We've worked with Public Works to double that output. So those little things are making a difference. It's seen every day, and I really appreciate the hard work, dedication to doing work that matters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can I add? Thank you. Chair. Hey, Charlie. Charlie, hey, Charlie, real quick, where can folks get that, the oyster?
Sure. So Aiden Stockdale, Education Volunteer Division Manager. So these vertical oyster gardens are available through our partners with the Tampa Bay Estuary Program. There's just a little form we make available for people to submit their name and contact information. They can pick one up from Robinson Preserve. So this is available to anybody in our region.
So anybody can go online and fill out the form to get the vertical oyster.
And then they'll get the information on how to pick up one of these.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, sorry. Charlie, by no means am I an expert on this, but I think that the state of Florida struggles a lot more to protect our drinking water as well from contaminants. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the northern states, from what I understand, they have a layer of clay and a huge layer of bedrock that we don't have here, which then it doesn't stop the pollutants, but it stalls it decades. Is, is that the case? So we've gone a much faster, we've got more risk to our aquifer quicker than the states out north. Is that correct?
A little quick lesson in geology in Florida here. Through the first 200 feet of soil where a lot of our shallow wells are taken from, for drinking water for homes, it is vulnerable slightly. There is a clay layer about 18 feet below the ground that, that sits below our landfills right now that gives us a little level of protection. But more importantly, the geology of Florida here, lay down by ancient seas, gives us almost a 300-foot layer of dolomitic, dolomite limestone that is 10 to the minus six in its porosity, about like this. And so when we, our drinking water wells are pulled from water from the Floridian aquifer that sits well below that, at depths of 900 to 1,500 feet below the ground. And above it, like in the northern states, this 300 feet of dolomitic limestone sits as a cap and doesn't let water go up or go down. We've got artesian wells for that very purpose because water there at 1,000 feet has that cap above it and a lot of water going all the way back to central Florida pushing it out to the Gulf, it's under pressure. And when we pierce that dolomitic cap, water pushes up through the well, and we have flowing wells on the ground. That's because the geology of Florida around here is protective of that. As you know, on the other hand, probably 40 to sometimes 60% of our drinking water supply comes from the surface, however, Lake Manatee, our, the rivers that, that feed that reservoir. And yes, that is vulnerable to contaminants. That does need to be protected. We've got, we have stewards, we have families who have farmed that watershed for generations who are the first stewards, the first conservationists to protect that drinking water supply. And a lot of attention is placed on agriculture. Oh, they've got too many fertilizers, they're letting it all run off. I'm here to defend the practices of some of those agriculturalists because they know that they don't want to drop that, that level of fertilizer and let it run off and, and lose its productivity growing crops and food. They kind of keep it on the land. So they're very judicious in how they apply that fertilizer. It's not like it used to be. And so it's important to protect our groundwater resources as they support our shallow drinking water wells and all of our, our groundwater, our, our surface water supplies at Lake Manatee. But we can know that our deep groundwater, our deepest groundwater is highly protected here throughout Florida in the Floridian aquifer.
That's good news. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Thank you very much for everything. All right, we'll let them kind of leave the chamber. Up next, we'll have Assistant Comment. We'll let everybody kind of clear the chambers for a second. Assistant Comment is for items that are future agenda items. When you come forward, please state your name, county residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I have one speaker on, and that's Andrea. Good morning.
Hey, guys. Welcome, Mike. Congratulations. I haven't seen you since then. So my name's Andrea, Manatee County activist. So I've got a few things I want to talk about. It's the normal stuff, my phones. I'd like the phones back on. When we all had the phones turned back on before, it was for more participation from the residents. I can say that it looks like we need more participation from the residents for the county. So I think that at this point, going into 2024 elections, that it would be appropriate to turn the phones back on, find a, some kind of system limiting the phones, but making them accessible to people like me that are going to be working and going to be on a campaign trail at some point, you know, around the country. So I really like to participate in my own personal community as well. And then, of course, I noticed our drinks are not allowed into the dais anymore. So I'd like some rules on that too, because I think I'm an adult here and if I need to sign something, I'll pay for the cleaning fee. But I can bring water. I bring water. I doubt it's going to hurt the floors that much, but I'm an adult and I'd like to have some type of capped drinking option in here, especially since we're here for hours. The main issue I have that I'd like to bring here, and it might be something you guys can all help me with, it might not be. So I've just learned that we are now having our investigators for our children, our Department of Children and Family Services, which is a near and dear cause to my heart. And I'm hearing it's going away from our sheriffs and going into the department. I, I, I don't know what I'm going to do with that here in the state of Florida, but like, no. I don't, I don't know what bureaucrat, what politician up in, in Florida thought this was a good idea. But we have inspectors. These, these people are overworked and underpaid, first and foremost. That's the first problem right there. The second problem is, is because of that, they're now falsifying documents. So over the last three months, we have Kristen Martinez, this is all from Florida, April Hawke, and Trevor McKenzie, all in the department, investigators, investigators with our Department of Children and Family, falsifying documents and being arrested. And those are the ones that they found. So that had to have been pretty egregious for those, who's going to be doing the checks and balances for our kids? These are our children here in the state of Florida. I hope this, this county, you know, supports it being at the sheriff. The sheriff's department are our law enforcement. They're the only ones that should be investigating any type of crime in the state of Florida. That's my two cents. Don't spend it all at one day and one space. Take care.
Thank you very much, Pam. Morning, sir. You know the...
I think I know the routine.
You knew the routine.
Is this thing on? For the record, Glenn Gribbina. I just got back from Tahoe. Talk about tires and waste. This was a four-day seminar about autonomous housing. We build rammed earth homes out of tires. This guy's a rock star. We need no infrastructure. We need no lift stations. We need no electric lines. We need no sewer lines. I'm going back this summer, he's building 15,000 of these. Why can't we do this here? I don't get it. You talk about reclaimed water. This guy does it all. And they only have seven inches of water a year and they make it work. So I think we should be moving in this direction. I still got some Tahoe's dirt that did get into a tire, but the guy's a rock star. I think we need to be moving in a more sustainable direction as far as I'm concerned. Good, bad, and ugly. Glenn Gribbina, Manatee County. Transparency. I agree with Andrea. You know, we, you're restricting us on our phone calls. You don't answer your emails. You don't, you don't communicate with the public. You're isolating us, and that's not your job. Your job is to communicate with us. Accountability, right? Honesty, accountability. Here's the problem I have. I did a records request. We spent $485,000 on a report we're not going to use, that by law you're required to use, and you don't. Please explain to the public why you wasted $485,000 of taxpayer money on a 171-page report that was outstanding. And by the way, you used this company last time, but suddenly they're not good enough this time. I don't get it. I did do, I did do the records request. There it is. So that's what we have. Veterans, let's talk about accountability. We're still missing a million, a million four. Commissioner Ryan, you've got a great, great project, got $4 million to light up. Manatee, we can't find $4 for our homeless vets? I'm still appalled that there is no accountability where that money went and why we still have homeless veterans. You guys are masters of deflection instead of correction. You better start correcting your stuff. You better start getting our vets off the street. You better start moving in the right direction, or this veteran issue, until Tunnels the Towers come, comes here, is going to haunt you all the way to the voting booth. For the record, Glenn Gadfly Gribbina.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward for public comment on future agenda items? With that, I have Commissioner Ballard's on the board.
I did just want to speak briefly to Ms. Griffin's comments about our, our child protective investigators and those moving from the sheriff's department over to DCF. Unfortunately, that was a decision that was made in Tallahassee. That was a law that was passed back in 2023, and the transition was made in, I believe, the fall of, of this past year. It's not a decision that I personally agreed with. I worked with our child protective investigators here in Manatee County for many years. At the sheriff's department, they were second to none. They were, they were fantastic. If, if there were ever a, and, and only seven of 67 counties in the, the state had their investigators through their sheriff's office versus DCF. So we were, we were an outlier. I do believe that, that we were an outlier in a positive way, but unfortunately, that's not where we stand now. They made the decision at the state level to unify those investigators under DCF. If there is ever a decision... If there is ever a decision to, to move some of those investigators back out to the sheriff's department, I would, I would be fully in, in support of that decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no other, seeing no other citizens like to come forward for public comment on future agenda items, I'll go ahead and close public comment. The next up is citizens' comment on consent agenda items only. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on the consent agenda items only? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I look for motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. I'll wait for it to come up.
Mr. Chair, District Three votes aye on consent.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead, and can I have a verbal vote on approval of consent agenda? And chair says aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move into presentations upon request. The first one up is financial management on item 31. Anyone like a presentation on that item? All right, would there be any in public comment on item 31?
Yes.
Huh? Yes, I am. Any public comment on item 31? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and have a motion to approve item 31 under financial management. Motion's been approved by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. If anyone can vote now.
Mr. Chair, District Three votes aye.
Thank you, sir. And the motion carries seven to zero. Going to item property management, item 32. Is there any public comment on item 32? Oh, sorry, but anybody like a presentation on item 32? All right, thank you. Is there any public comment regarding item 32?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do need to just state for the record that this is adoption of Resolution R 24019, vacating portions of two separate easements located at 5129 19th.
All right, thank you very much.
Lane East Bradenton, Florida.
Thank you for reading that into the record, Mr. County Attorney. Is there any public comment on item 32? Seeing none, I will close public comment and look for a motion to approve item 32. We have a motion made by Commissioner Ballard and seconded by Commissioner Satcher. If anyone could vote now.
Mr. Chair, District Three votes aye.
Thank you. And the motion carries seven, zero. All right, moving on. We're going to move into advertised public hearings. This is a presentation scheduled for a community and veteran services. Who is presenting? Good morning.
Good morning. Tracy Adams, Deputy Director, Community and Veteran Services. Good morning to you all. I'm hoping my reinforcements will be here soon, and I'm going to tag team them in. But I think you all have our slides. No, they were attached to the online agenda.
Do you want to take your break? Yeah, she can get through this. You're going to be pretty quick, correct?
What?
How, how long is about your, your presentation?
Oh, how long is the presentation? Three minutes? At best.
I just wanted to get through this before we went to the next item.
All right, and I'm going to actually hand it over to Julia Viera.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Julia Viera. I'm the Community Development Project Manager.
If you want, she can just.
That's fine.
Talk the slides to you.
Please move forward, thank you.
My apologies. So this public hearing today is because we are required to have a public hearing in order to submit a substantial amendment to some of our action plans to reflect some of the resolutions that this board approved in the fall to shift some, some money from projects that were canceled, that no longer needed our funding to, to be conducted, to new projects that were identified as priority needs. So here we go. So very briefly, so on slide two. So our Community Development Division administers the community, the entitlement funds that the, the Manatee County receives from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. So, next slide, please. So last fall, the two resolutions that this board approved was Resolution 23157. So this resolution canceled the first project, CHAF, Affordable Rental Housing Development, because this project didn't need our funding anymore. They, they're carrying out the project with, with their own funding. And so this funding was shipped towards Habitat for Humanity Polling Gardens. And with that funding, we'll develop five of the 16 units that are going on the site. In addition, the board provided funding to rehab the, the county's foster children shelter. And then the last resolution is R 23203. And that resolution approved a new project is the food, food bank expansion pre-development costs. So these funds were identified from completed projects that were successful. They just had some leftover funding. So next slide. So the substantial amendments to the plans, they were required by HUD so they can reflect these project changes. As part of these efforts, we also need to do a 30-day public comment period, which will end next week. And so in addition to this public hearing, we'll offer the opportunity for the public to comment and ask questions. So next slide. So for today, we are asking the board to allow the public to make any comments or ask any questions and authorize our team to submit the substantial amendments to HUD so we can finally start those projects. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Before we have public comment, I need to read into the record authorization to submit substantial amendment to the 2019, 2020, 2020, 21, 21, 22, and 22, 23 Annual Action Plan. Is there any public comment on item 33? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and ask for a motion. Motion approved by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
District Three is aye.
Thank you, sir. And the resolution carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Coming up next is our regular items for the agenda, and the first up is our county administrator.
Yes, sir. This is just to allow me to enter into the record, adoption of the resolution. Let me get to it. Resolution R 24-30, declaring a state of local emergency. As you recall, last board meeting, we had the potential of a, of a storm that we want to be prepared for. This just allows us to clean up the record.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any public regarding, public comment regarding the declaring the state of emergency resolution? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. There's been a motion made by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. All those in favor? Vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, District Three votes aye.
Thank you, sir. And the resolution carries seven to zero. Next up is our Community and Veteran Services, which the appointment of five applicants to the Library Advisory Board, who will be presenting for the advisory appointments.
Good morning. Tammy Parrott, Library Services Manager, Manatee County. So we have four new seats to be filled, and we have one seat that is being vacated by someone who's currently on the board. This will bring the total board up to nine spots with four existing members remaining. So we do have the matrix, I believe, in front of you, of the applicants. And I believe we have at least one applicant for all of the new seats.
Okay. So we're going to, do you want to speak to any of it, or as being on the library board, or, or just go ahead?
So I, I will say, we, we do have several applicants for a couple of the seats. I do think it's unfortunate that for a couple of the seats, we actually only have one applicant. I don't know what the board's appetite would be to open it back up for a, for a little bit longer to see if we got more than one applicant for, for some of those new seats. So that's just my, my question, just to, you know, kind of pose to the board. Would anybody be opposed to that, or are you all set to move forward today?
Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chair, when I'm able.
Did you want to go first? Commissioner, I'll be announced.
I'll be very quick, sir. I just wanted to say that I'm not particularly satisfied with the applicants on the list, so I would favor opening this back up and the county sort of doing a little, giving a little harder push, put a little more effort into noticing folks that the, their board opportunities on this particular board.
So are you, would that be in a motion for, are you asking the table and open back up the, the application process for the Library Advisory Board?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bearden has seconded.
I have a question to ask.
Okay, that's right.
Tammy, I mean, you're, you're more involved with this process. So my question is, is this a really arduous process to, to get people to, to come and play? I'm just wanting, you know?
No, that's a very good question. Thank you. This is the most robust, actually, applicant pool I've seen since we've started working at the county, since I've started working at the county. I was very pleased with the response, and my only concern, and I would have to ask Attorney Clay to see, our current board expires at the end of January. So the new board was going to be seated in February and begin our work then. So that is my only concern, but the will of the board.
So one other question, Tammy. So to your knowledge, then, these applicants you are satisfied with?
I am. I don't know any of them personally, but I have reviewed their applications.
I guess the next question would be for Commissioner Van Ostenbridge to understand why he's not satisfied with any of it, maybe before I make my decision. Thank you, Tammy.
I don't mind responding to that. I don't see many individuals on this list who are like-minded with this board.
Okay. Is that satisfactory? Okay. Well, I mean, we have, you have two seats that are expiring into this month, or three, sorry, three seats. You have two that are expiring in '26, and the, the four opens would expire in '28. So realistically, she has a board that's expiring at the end, I mean.
So it, it's.
Well, what happens then if it expires?
Could we ask the county attorney?
Yeah, Bill, please.
I have to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I don't know off the top of my head without taking a look at the ordinance that establishes the board. It depends how the board is, how that is characterized, because it looks like you have three, according to the slide in the agenda item, that are going to expire, but you still have a majority left that don't expire at the end of the month. Is that correct?
Thank you for the clarification, actually. You are correct. There are three, three people leaving our five, our existing five-person board at the end of this month. Two are applicants right now to remain in their seats, and one is retiring. So we were looking for five new board members. So that means that, let me see, let me do the, the high math here for a second. So if we do not confirm the returning members of the board, and we do have one that's leaving, we'll be left with two board members.
Okay, the slide shows nine seats.
Nine seats, and four of them are new.
Yeah, okay. Four of the new ones. I remember we did, I know.
Three of the five are expired.
I would say the board's probably not going to be able to convene and do its job until you have a quorum of people on it that, that are, at least a quorum, which is majority, that are, have valid and existing appointments. So if you table this, and you can, that's the board's discretion, it may mean delaying the work of the advisory board until you've decided to, to appoint a full slate.
Is, is there a way to reinstate the two that are looking for reinstatement? And then, you have two that are remaining for, they don't expire till '26, and then you have two that are expiring right now, City of Bradenton, City of Palmetto seats. Can you?
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can answer that very quickly. The answer is yes. It's up to the board. The motion is to table the whole thing. But you don't have to do it that way. You could be more selective and decide to reappoint some, and then for the new seats, to table those. It's purely within the discretion of the board, as the policymaking board.
I mean, the motioner would have to.
Yes.
Change his motion, and the second would have to agree. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to amend my motion. Some might make a hostile amendment if they like, but I would rather the board not meet at all than have a board that is going to meet and make decisions that are not in line with this county commission.
Okay. With that, we have a standing motion by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge to table the, to table the appointment of the, the two existing, to reinstate two existing, and the additional five board members of the advisory board, the seconded by Commissioner Bearden.
We do need to call for public comment.
Yeah, I'm going to. So what I'd like to do right now, before we vote on that, I would like to call for a public comment, and after that, Commissioner Cruz is on the board. I'll let her speak. I know what you're going to say.
Hi, Andrea Griffin, Manatee County activist. So there's a couple of things that I'm thinking out here. You know, I have to agree with Van Ostenbridge, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge. We need to have this, we've worked very hard to design this county to meet the majority of the people here in this county. And we, including myself, have fought, and I know this has nothing to do with the school district, you know, book, you know, schools access, children's access to books and stuff like that. So this is a very important. I'm not a, a supporter of libraries. I think they're a dying breed. So I'm trying to remove that bias out of here and be reasonable. And I just think that this is a voluntary advisory board. If it needs to be, we need the people that represent this community, not just who is available. And I have to agree with that. We're working too hard to try to correct this ship, to just start throwing people in there and not taking our time to do it right. And so that's just going to be my comments.
You know the routine.
For the record, Glenn Gibbelina, Manatee County. Other side of the fence, Andrea. I couldn't disagree with this, with this resolution, this motion more. Here's the problem that we have. Advisory boards, first of all, they don't have any teeth, right? They can come to you and say, we want this, and you could 86 it. So I don't know what the big threat is here. I thought we're a democracy, and when you get an applicant, you're mad because not another, not enough people are running for that position? I'm confused. You want to like steer the boat to what you want to move. You have an outstanding employee who just said, I am happy with the applicants. So you're going to take her opinion and throw it to the side because apparently she has no value to this board? She can't even recommend the people that she's okay with. That's a slap in the face. You give these department heads the latitude to say, okay, I'm going to go over the applicants. I'm happy with them. And you've got some renegade commissioners going, oh, they don't think like us, so why would we have any diversity on the board? It's absolutely ridiculous. The time slot was open. She did a great job trying to get all the applicants that they want, and you're not happy because you didn't get your guy in there. I've seen your advisory boards, how you get them. You get a five applicants. Your guy, hey, I'll open it, I'll nominate it, you close it, boom, done. You don't even care about the other four. But you're mad now because there's only one. You need to go home and think about this. Do you want to call up your buddy, hey, that slot's open. I'm not happy with the applicant that's there. Have you even read the resume of the applicant in question? of the applicant in question? Have you? Or you're just not happy with it? I don't get it. Advisory boards. They applied, no one else adopted, nobody else did, give them the job. It's pretty simple. But no, let's table it, let's delay it, because then the board won't have a quorum. People are leaving, just like I did, resigned from the Affordable Housing Board, because you guys don't listen, because it wasn't your guy. I find a slap in the face to the department head and employees. And she told you, "I'm happy with the applicants." Respect her position and her advisement, for the record.
Thanks, Commissioner Cruz.
I know it's getting tabled, but, I mean, let's be honest, this was a better advertised application process than almost every advisory board we have. This was a public work session to announce these five, these additional seats. This was advertised on Twitter, advertised on Facebook. All of us knew about it. You could have called your friends and said, "Hey, don't forget to spend the 30 seconds it takes to apply for this position so we can slide you in." But we didn't. Two of the seats that are up, nobody else applied for. And one of the people had a 92% rate, 92% attendance, the other one had 98% attendance, and she was there since 2017. That's unheard of. Our planning commission doesn't have that level of participation and attendance. These are people that clearly care. And my question is, if we've looked it up or not, this is not one of these advisory boards we just came up with for fun. This is a library board that was created under a county ordinance associated with a millage that we're collecting. Do we know if there's any restrictions in terms of our ability to hold these meetings that are going to potentially impact the millage associated with this? Because did we look into this ordinance ahead of time to say, "Hey, if we don't meet X number of times a month, or if there's X amount of gap, that we run the risk of not being able to collect the millage on the taxes"? I'm not saying we are, but has anyone looked into that? Are we just arbitrarily just canceling meetings from an advisory board that is tied to a specific millage? I think we need to check that ahead of time. There are two people that no one else applied. I think somebody made the request or suggestion that, hey, maybe we should at least reappoint those people because it gives us the majority, allows the board to operate. These are clearly people that care, who've been on the board for six, seven years, attending every meeting. Nobody else applied after months. I mean, this was last February, I think it was, we had this work session. You had a year to apply. You had a year. And one of the seats is literally for a librarian with a Master of Library Science. How many people do you think you're going to get? How many, how many friends of people on this board are librarians with a Master of Library Science? There was three. The fact that there's three Masters of Library Science people in Manatee County shocks me. We probably got every single one of them applied for this position. We're not going to fill these seats when they're, when they're that specific. The seat literally requires a librarian with a Master of Library Science. It's part of the ordinance. It has nothing to do with ideology. There's three of them already applied. I think we had a good collection, more, to your point, applicants than we have in most things. A lot of times, it's one person, one person, one person. Affordable housing, we had one for every seat. Maybe we had one of them at two. So this is a good, I understand it's going to be tabled, but I think those first two, Seats 1 and 2, are people who put in the time, put in the effort, and it keeps a quorum. And until our attorney or somebody can verify that our ordinance does not run a risk of our millage that we're collecting, associated with failure to meet, I think it would be short-sighted just to arbitrarily table this without some verification of exactly what that ordinance says.
May I speak for just a moment? When we have the four, if we do go with the two seats, and we will still not have a quorum, because it will then, at that point, be a nine-person board.
Be a nine-person board even before we appoint the first time?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can understand the overall concerns on this board regarding this sensitive subject, ensuring that we have the proper people that are in place on this board because of the things that have happened within the last few years regarding libraries. I mean, it is what it is. So if commissioners are getting a check to take a step back, look at, you know, the applicants, or maybe put it back out there on the street, I think that's a smart move in regards to ensuring that we are moving our county in the right direction, the way that this board wants to do that, which is the majority of this board. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments by any other commissioners? All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, a second by Commissioner Beardon to table, to motion to table the appointment of five applicants to the library board. If you cast your votes right now?
Mr. Chairman, District 3 votes aye.
I can figure that. Cast our votes. The motion table carries six to one with Commissioner Cruz voting no. With that, we're moving on to, thank you, Ms. Parrott, we're moving on to developmental services and the adoption of Resolution R-24-026, budgeting and appropriating legally available funds for the catalytic loan to the Community Assisted Supported Living Inc. Castle, approving and authorizing the loan documents consistent with the executed loan term letter dated January 9th, 2024, and the adoption of the Budget Amendment Resolution B-24-051. And Ms. Knapp.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask, should we open this and 37 together?
Yes, that sounds fine. Yes, sir, thank you.
So we'll take public comment on both.
Okay. And then you mean, read 37 in the record. Execution of catalytic loan agreements between Manatee County and the Community Assisted Supported Living Inc. Castle, a not-for-profit corporation for the acquisition of 43-unit commercial development to be redeveloped into 60-unit mixed-use affordable housing development located at 8110 Tammany Trail, Sarasota, Florida. The principal loan amount is $1,750,000.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Knott, Development Services. And we're here today, as you've said, for Items 37, 36, and 37, because of actions made by the board on December 12th of 2023 to approve the items, as you read into the record. And so I'm going to actually turn it over to Ms. Rowena Elliott. She's going to give you an update, a short presentation of what's occurred since then on these two items. And there, Ms. Sheila McLean is also in the back, Director of, or she... Too many acronyms. Chief Financial Officer for additional support on these items as well.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. For the record, Rowena Young-Gope, Affordable Housing Development Coordinator. And as stated earlier by Ms. Knapp, the Board of County Commissioners at their December 12th meeting approved a catalytic loan to Community Assisted Supported Living in the amount of $1,750,000. The board also directed staff and the county attorney to negotiate the terms of the loan and to draft corresponding documents and bring back to the board for review and execution, and therefore, we're here today. We also have Mr. Eller in the audience, if you have questions going forward. Staff also worked with the Finance Department to draft a Budget Amendment Resolution amending the annual budget for 2024 to allocate the sum for the, from the Southwest TIF. And that is just about what I have. If you have any questions regarding the terms and...
Are there any questions to Rowena on the catalytic loan to Castle? Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
This has nothing to do specific with this, but I mentioned it last time, this came up as well. This is a great project. I believe this is a great use of our funds. The economic benefits, the benefits to the community are tremendous. Whether we call it a catalytic loan agreement, or we call it gap financing, it's the same thing. This is the third one since we stopped doing them. We did it with 920, we did it with NEST. I think this board is clearly seeing there are a time and a place where this is a good use of funds for the benefit of the community. I'd like to, you know, hopefully have some of you reconsider the flat-out ban on gap financing, since we've used it three times since we banned it. So our staff can look for more opportunities of this nature, because I think this is great, and I'd like more people to be willing to come forward and request similar programs.
Thank you, sir. All right. Right now, before we go to a motion, I would open it for public comment?
We're opening it on 36 and 37.
36 and 37 for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we're going to vote on each separately, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, we need to do the two separate motions. I think they're both in your system.
Yep. There's been a motion on Item 36, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Beardon.
I don't.
I got it on my screen.
I don't have it on my screen.
All right, we're going to...
I did, and then it disappeared.
And what we're going to do is just do a verbal vote. All those in favor of Item 36, say aye.
Aye.
District 3 votes aye.
Chair says aye. Any opposed? No, the motion on Item 36 carries. Item 37. Motion approved by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Beardon by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
District 3 votes aye.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ellen, we're now, Item 37 carries seven to zero. Thank you, Rowena.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys, for bringing this project forward. It's going to be great for District 4, and it's going to be great for the citizens of Manatee County. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, going on. Is there, do we read since comment? Is there, there's no Commissioner Agenda items moving forward? County Attorney, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
County Administrator, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Are there any Commissioner comments? We're on 38. I'm on 38. Yeah, move to consent. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing there, seeing there's no Commissioner comments, we will move to adjourn. Thank you very much, and we appreciate everyone being here today.